And I'll call the order of the Town and Mount Desert Planning Board meeting for October 22nd, 2025. Welcome aboard. I'll kick it off. Oh, we got some people online too. Two Planning Board members joining us online. So I'll kick it off with some introductions. There she is. Welcome aboard Meredith. So I guess I'll start with Meredith and welcome Meredith back on the board as she's so graciously agreed to come back on the board as an alternate member to help us process the the Heels Way remand which is coming up in in November. And we've had Ann Dalton online too. Hi Ann. Ann's a regular voting member and then other members of the board. We've got Daniel Burke, we've got Tracy Loftus Keller, myself, William Hanley, Gail Marshall, and Alan Kimerly. And I think the voting board tonight will be Alan, Gail, myself, Tracy, and Ann. And with that, bear with me because I feel like I'm gonna lose my voice. So I will.
Bill?
Yes.
I was asking if maybe Daniel could take my place as the voting member because I'm not sure how long I'll be able to hang in here from my location. So.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody you'd like to?
Move we nominate Daniel Burke to be the voting member on the planning board tonight.
Second top.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard Daniel. There he is. Right. Do we have first item tonight? Well, technically second item is we had two sets of minutes for approval. We've got minutes from September 10th. That was the the 51 Oak Hill Road approval. And then we had the remember the lot access question.
I move approval of both sets of minutes.
Second top. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we had minutes from the 24th.
I move approval.
You said both sets.
I just, I said both sets, but if you want them separately, doesn't matter.
Yeah, let's do them separately. So then and then September 24th. So all the
I move approval of the September 24th minutes.
Check it out.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Minutes are behind us.
But, great.
And item three is ahead of us and that is a conditional use approval application. And tonight we have conditional use approval application 14, 2025. Owner is Seal Harbor Boathouse LLC. Agent is Tim Broschu from Haley Ward. Location is 28 Dodge Point Road, Seal Harbor. Tax map 001 lot 018. Zone is Shoreland Residential 2. Purpose is section 3.4 and 6C.7. Marine structures, piers, docks, wards, bridges, and other structures and uses extending over below the normal high water liner within a wetland. Addition of a 25 by 25 foot float and a 38 by 3.75 foot gangway to the existing marine structure. We had a site visit at 4:30. Was this advertised and?
Yes, it was advertised in the Ellsworth American and Mount Desert Islander on Thursday, October 9th, 2025. And butters were notified by a letter dated August 8th and there were five separate butters notified.
Wouldn't be August anymore.
Sorry, October 8th. Right.
Any conflict of interest on this one?
None here.
So then Alan, would you care to report on your observations from the site visit today?
Well, we all gathered down there amongst all the construction going on in the area. And there's really just open water right there. That they're going to be putting set floats in next spring and the approval of course.
So it's technically one float and one gangway off of the existing float system was my understanding of that. Anything to add to that, Gail?
No.
Right. With that, Tim, I'll turn it over to you.
My name is Tim Broschu, engineer and project manager with Haley Ward. I think you summarized it pretty well in just the description. It's fairly straightforward project, which is an application for an additional seasonal gangway float off an existing seasonal ramp and float system owned by the Seal Harbor Boathouse Pier. Additional float will be utilized by the abutting property owners, which is Dodge Point LLC. This will eliminate the potential destruction of a separate additional permanent pier and seasonal float system adjacent to the Seal Harbor Boathouse where they have their frontage. As provided in the town land use code order, it's under section 6C.7.14. Stays that if two or more shorefront owners choose to share a common marine structure, the app may request additional square footage of floats. And that's basically what the application before you is right now. As shown on the site plan that is attached in the application. The proposed float in gangway will come off the existing float. Can provide document for three boats. Gangway is approximately 38 feet long by 3.75 feet wide and the float is 25 by 25. And the float system will mimic the existing boats that the Seal Harbor Boathouse currently uses. And again, this is seasonal. It'll be put in in the spring, taken out in the fall and will be anchored with the chains and point blocks.
Alan, can you change the view so we can also see regarding of?
That's a gal. That's.
There you go. Right. All right. Well, I'll open it up, I guess, to public comment if there's any public comments about this application. Now's your chance. I am not hearing or seeing any public comment. Right. So I'm gonna close public comment. And let's get on with this. And I think the first order is to find the application.
I will be finding the application complete.
Second top.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody have any thoughts about?
We use the short form for processing this application.
Second top.
Right. All those in favor of using the short form?
Aye.
Aye. And then let's.
I'm unmoved. We grant approval of the application.
Second top.
Then we press pause and we go through the review of the application. So and use ordinance here in front of me. I've got the short form and the application. And let's
Not the second ones are given.
And let's drill through it. So we are in, we're starting in section six, standards for use permits and approvals, section 6A, general performance standards. And under section 6A, it kicks it off with my favorite compatibility compatibility. And under compatibility, they talked about the physical size, that the proposed gangway and flow will be consistent with the size and type of existing structures. Visual impact, the proposed installation will be an existing seasonal float system. Proximity to other structures, the proposed installation will be within the existing seasonal float system and density of development. The installation will not increase any significant new development incident. So we're going to say C application. Erosion and sedimentation control. Object will not create any erosion or sedimentation as it doesn't have any soil disturbance as it's out in the ocean. See application. 6A3 highway safety, NA. Impact on town services. NA. 6A5 land suitability. And applicants says NA. 6A6 lighting. NA. There's no lighting proposed. Stormwater 6A7. NA. 6A8 vegetation, NA. 6A9 dust fumes, vapors, odors, and gases, NA. So the findings of fact are as presented by the applicant in the attached application. And the conclusion of laws that proposed use is in compliance with all standards of section 6A for which the standard has been met.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right. Then we move on to section 6B. Specific performance standards for activities and land uses. 6B1 agriculture, NA. 6B7 excavation or filling, NA. 6B8 fences and walls, NA. 6B16 sign regulations, NA. 6B18 and I'm following along on the checklist here. That's why it's out of order. But well, in order, it's skipping sections. So 6B18 wireless communications facilities, NA. 6B19 animal husbandry, too, NA. 6B20 mobile food vendors, NA. 6B21 rooming house, NA. 6B22 hotels and motels. NA. So findings or facts that pose use will include none of the specific activities and land uses described in section 6B. And the conclusion law is section 6B is not applicable.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is in 6B now and you don't have any checklist. Do you want to add that?
We can add 6B dot 23. And that's solar energy systems. Which is NA.
So I again move that the provisions of 6B are in, are not applicable.
Again, second.
All those in favor again?
Aye.
Aye. Right. Section 6C. Shoreland zoning standards for review by the planning board. And under shoreline zoning standards under 6C1. We kick it off with agriculture and animal husbandry. Getting there.
Page 20.
Page 20. NA. Archaeological sites. Can says NA.
It's an email. It says some of a packet. It had been sent an email to NC, PC, and MHPC. Inquiring about archaeological sites and they never got that or they haven't got that. They sent it on the 8th or no 13th.
13.
Yep. But you can condition that.
So we'll go back.
Get back from the historic preservation.
So section 6C2, I'm gonna go ahead and say C application. 65 essential services. NA. Parking areas. Applicant says applicable standard met. See application and the reason we're here tonight, section 6C7.
Can I just ask a question about the parking areas? Just the reason I asked at the at the dock about parking areas is that you don't anticipate there actually are going to be any new parking areas because of the location of the properties.
The additional floats and the existing, as shown on the site plan, they noted their parking area there where they've got different amount of parking now.
So we we rate it applicable standard met because there isn't going to be anymore? Is that how we'd handle that? Or or not?
Say not applicable.
I would say that too.
And not in using this as a plan.
They're not using any parking spaces there.
No, it talks on your property.
Yeah, which is right there.
So section 6C, parking areas, NA. And again, the reason we're here tonight, marine and freshwater structures standards for section 6C7. So just bear with me the as I read through the performance standards of section 67. That talks about the commercial and public marine structures are exempt from requirements 12 through 15. So performance standard number one, access from shore. We've got LAP and has demonstrated they have existing access from shore, actually the pier. Item two, interference with existing uses and beaches. There's, there was correspondence with the harbor master. Three, effect on fisheries and wildlife, et cetera. It's, it's attached to an existing pier or float and ramp system. Size, they talk about the facility shall be no larger in dimension than necessary to carry on the activity consistent with the surrounding character and uses. And that temporary pier dock or washroom, no wider than six feet for non-commercial uses. They're 3.75. Five, no new structures, you know, that you can't build a new structure on over or abutting a pure warfar dock. They're not proposing that. Six, no. Six is new permanent piers and docks. This, they're not proposing permanent piers and docks. Seven, conversion dwelling. They're not converting the existing float in ramp. To how they eight, eight limit.
Work force or otherwise.
Yes. There, there is no, it can't exceed 20 feet above. Man, they're not doing that. Interference. Nine. Interference with natural flow. That talks about the natural flow of any surface or subsurface waters. It's riding the tide up and down. Encroachment on navigation. That the marine structure shall be designed, sighted, and constructed to not encroach on navigation channels. I mean, that's again, they've got the correspondence with the harbor master. Morning area 11. Planning board shall request comment from the harbor master. You've already got comment. Well, dimensional limits. So just running through the dimensional limits for dimensional maximums for marine structures, maximum length of the entire structure is 225 feet. The Alan, can you remind us the total length of the structure?
Gangway is 38 feet. It goes up to the 25 by 25.
And Kim, did we have to add that on to the length of the structure that's there or? It's, how does that look?
What? What are you asking me?
So the length of the, the new structure is 35 feet and
28.
38 feet and
But does that measurement go straight out? When you say the, the maximum length of the pier, that is going out from the tidal, not off to the side.
Yeah, it's straight out.
Side.
They're going to the side.
Yeah, we're not.
They're not extending more into the ocean.
Okay, so that's not.
Right.
Okay. Maximum length of all permanent structures is 115 feet. We're not adding permanent structures. Maximum length of all non-permanent structures is 75 feet. Then Kim, that, that's not relative because we're going off to the side?
It is. And the existing float system that's there for the Seal Harbor Boathouse, that, that's grandfather. That's been there.
Okay.
For the ordinance of, before the 2002 change for marine structures.
So we're good there. So maximum width of pier walkway is six feet. There are 3.75 maximum width of ramp. Is six feet and it's really just a walkway. Maximum square footage of floats is 400 square feet.
That's only if it's a singular.
Use.
So you're looking at the next one.
Right. So the maximum square footage of floats for communal marine structures is 800 square feet. And we're only considering the new there. You know, they're way below that. Additional, and then those are the dimensional maximums and standards. The performance standards continue with additional square footage for floats. And that's where Tim mentioned earlier that the two or more shorefront waters, shorefront owners choose to share a commercial marine structure. They may request additional square footage of floats. 14 communal dock when proposed by the applicant. Yeah, that's relative to new subdivisions may provide. That's not relative. 15 limit on number and there's, there should be no more than one marine structure on the lot. That's it for section 6C7. So I'm going to say C application. Then in my checklist, it jumps to 69 roads and driveways, which is NA. 611 water quality.
There's no distribution.
The applicant says NA. So the findings of fact are that the proposed use will include none of the specific activities or land uses described in section 6C except for 6C2 and 6C7. And the conclusion law is that section 60 is not applicable except for 6C2 and 6C7, which the standard has been met.
Except that the, the archaeological one hasn't yet been met. So we need to make that a condition of
Like conditions.
Or has or will be met. I mean, if we can say it that way, the request isn't, and many of you just don't have the reply.
Underwater archaeology.
I'll move. Never know. Approval of.
And I'll check it out. And then in the notes of section 6C, we can say that we're waiting upon
Yeah, the permit will be conditional.
What? Are we gonna condition the permit? Are we just gonna say that in the notes?
Condition.
Condition.
Condition that. All right. So since we're in the shoreline zone in section 6C, we get to also do section 5.00. So we had a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks Heidi. Right. Section 59. So this is all shoreline stuff for 59 and so 591 will maintain safe and healthful conditions. See application. 592 will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation, NA. 593 will adequately provide for the disposable disposal of all wastewater, NA. 594 will not have adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or wildlife habitat. See application. 595 will observe shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to island, right inland and coastal waters. See application. 596 will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comp plan. So they say NA here, but if we permit the
Well, is the comp plan designated any of this area?
I think so.
I'm not aware of that.
Okay. But that's okay.
Then you have a date has to.
So we're, we're gonna condition it relative to the state, not the comp plan. So NA. 597 will not adversely affect existing commercial fishing or maritime activities in Shoreland Commercial District. Let's say it's C application. 598 will avoid problems associated with floodplain development. See application. 599 is in conformance with the provisions of the section 6A, B, and C. See, it's standard met. So the findings of fact are C above and the conclusion laws that all requirements for section 59 have been met.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we come to the permit conditions.
Do you need DEP permits or anything like that for this?
No, not their C is not required.
Okay. Thank you. And no army flowers.
Right.
So it would just be the, the confirmation that the
We get that, their response back, we can provide that. Yeah, we should come back. Nothing, because they don't, they don't review anything that doesn't include soils. But it's, it won't be a problem.
Just waiting on the state to say something.
So that would be the only condition.
That's the only condition. Right. Well, that's circle back to our eight track and press play. Approval vote. All those in favor of approving the application submitted with the permit condition?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congrats.
Thank you.
For putting together an easy to follow app.
And some of the color of the print was terrible. Oh my God, the light blue, that was hard to read.
No, I just picked it on a special.
Yeah, it's not very.
I'll make a note next time.
You're red.
Dark red.
Red. It'll be good.
That means danger.
Green.
They're green. No anger to go enforcement.
Have a good night, thing.
Yeah. And we got everybody's signature.
Yep.
On the notes.
In the front.
You've got the You've got the the other portions of it.
We'll be intrigued to see how they actually put in that walkway. Where it goes out from the two floats
Where your two pieces go.
And then goes, and then comes back.
Yeah.
That's an engineering vapor. Uh conundrum, conundrum. Yeah. Seems like they would, they would need a small floor.
We need to write anything on here about the
Right.
Yes.
Let it just turn up. Let me just vote here. Uh all right, item four other, we have an update from the Land Use Zoning Ordinance Advisory Committee. And um we will also discuss review Planning Board Application Subdivision and Land Use Zoning Ordinance Amendments. So why don't we go start with the last date?
Yeah.
Uh we met last night. Um and we went once, we we went through in the print. We discussed again the L eighteen twenty-nine updates, as we're likely to have to, or likely to want to work on uh for a presentation at town meeting and um the other thing we talked about is that under state law, Matt did a grid that showed how the maximum square foot that we can require is likely to change in our zoning ordinance, and he's used red to describe, to show where the differences are, only there are some, there were some errors in it, so there's some things that are crossed out. But under the current ordinance, maybe you can describe, I I'm happy to, but you might want to describe what the changes are now um in the minimum lot areas.
Yeah, so uh with L eighteen twenty-nine, that got passed, uh there were provisions that changed the minimum uh lot areas and then certain density provisions um that municipalities can require.
You just for the record summarize what L D.
Eighteen twenty-nine.
Yes, it's
Uh this was like the omnibus bill passed by legislature's past session that had to do a lot with uh trying to increase housing uh in different ways, so some of the provisions they're all over the place, some are with aid use, some are with density and like zoning. Um others were with uh like building height and affordable housing. Um so there are a lot of different types of provisions, but the ones we focused on last night, we talked about all of that questions, policy questions, sort of loser committee for different types of the provisions, but the biggest one was the uh land use and density and dimensional requirement areas. Um that came from that bill, and so the bill essentially looks at uh growth areas that have been determined by towns and their comp plans, whether the most recent comp plan that was passed uh or adopted was, and it takes um look, it's a growth area is one consideration, and then whether or not there's public water and sewer available, so both water and sewer uh available in that area or any other area of the town. And then it created a minimum lot size uh provisions that town can't ask for minimum lot sizes greater than what the state now pro- uh provides, and then also there were some density um requirements that went along with that, so I'll go through the important ones. Uh for if you're in a growth area and you have water, public water and sewer, uh go serving a lot uh that lot now, you can't, in those areas, you cannot require a minimum lot size of greater than five thousand square feet. And then you're in a growth area, don't have those public water and sewer, you you just have public sewer or public water, but not both. Um it can require, but you're still in the growth area, you can't require a greater uh minimum lot size than the twenty thousand square feet, which is currently the state minimum for like if you're just served by a septic system. Um I don't think that will change really ever, but so twenty thousand square feet is the minimum for now. And then if you're outside of the growth area, but you do have public water and sewer, um you were, you cannot make them require a minimum lot size of greater than five thousand square feet uh either, now or that, being in the growth there, or being outside the growth area and having water sewer, being in the growth area and having water sewer where they differs the density requirements. Or if you're in the growth area, the town can't ask, require um a density of greater than one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet per dwelling unit for the first four units, and you can't require more than five thousand square feet for every unit after that. So essentially the state's selling you, and your growth area with water and sewer, you have to allow four units at minimum to fit on that lot as like a minimum size. Now, if it's bigger than that, and you can fit additional units on, you can only require another five thousand square feet for every, so if you want to build a four unit, like a quadplex on a five thousand square foot lot, the city town has to allow that. If you're gonna add a fifth unit, they don't need a ten thousand square foot lot.
So if I could just remind people, which the growth areas that we're currently talking about, and we are in the comp plan process, is basically downtown northeast harbor, um part of Otter Creek and Main Street in Sunsville. But Main Street in Sunsville doesn't have sewer nor water, it just has water, so that's gonna be its own thing.
Right, the only
What else am I missing? What other growth areas?
Well, as I said, the only growth areas that have both water and sewer are the Seal Harbor uh Village.
Yes, that's right. So have a village.
Downtown northeast harbor, where I got a new bill that has both water and sewer, and Otter Creek doesn't have both water and sewer.
Right.
Uh but they are in the growth area, so they would be capped, so if you're in the growth area and don't have water and sewers, so that's the twenty thousand square foot minimum lot size.
And it's the town that determines what growth areas are.
Through the comp plan process, so, you know, whether it's luckily or just advantageously, the town is currently going through a comp plan process to update its growth areas in a timely manner that coincides with uh or if you just finished a comp plan, it might be like a crap. Maybe we didn't want some of these to be growth areas based off this legislation, but
Right.
And so uh I've communicated with Noel uh and Suzanne about this uh topic for the future land use piece of the the comp plan, so tomorrow I'll be kind of deep reaping that one, where our conversations were last night, and a lot of policy questions that I have, trying to find on my phone. I made a list of all of them. Uh so if you want to share them with me, but I couldn't find the document, I gave it earlier today. One more time. Essentially, the biggest ones were about uh
Are these the other updates, the other updates?
Sorry?
Are you talking about the other eighteen twenty-nine updates?
No, I'm I'm not gonna go through the future land use considerations that came up last night. Okay. Land board, just as aware of the
Just wanna ask Ian how we're doing on times for her. Anne, are we doing okay on time with you? I guess that's okay.
Right.
They do want to talk about the remand at some point. Okay, Anne's still with us.
Dude.
That's
Sure. Actually, there you go.
I I I probably have to dash out by seven fifteen-ish.
Just wanna do the remand now then.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, let's let's just, yeah, thank you, so let's just switch things around here, so yeah, so here we go, wel- welcome aboard Meredith, you're and uh just let's, let's talk about the remand uh really quick, cause uh talking to Andy and Kim about it, it's, looks like we're targeting like the the twelfth or the nineteenth of November. And Andy, you know, we discussed this, really, the the voting members that were there for that were Meredith, myself, and Tracy, and Andy is is suggesting that we get more than three. And so I reached out to Anne, I reached out to Daniel, and I reached out to Alan about that, only because I think Gail, at some point, you
Yeah, I would be, I would, I would uh step aside.
Yeah.
Alan, did you speak up at the meeting about it?
You were talking about the ice rink.
I was talking about the ice rink.
But were you, there was one meeting you were at, and I don't think you were a board member yet, I think you
I could, I could just go ahead and uh hang tough with Gail. And
But I think, I can, but I can't find in the minutes, but I'm pretty sure you spoke up at one of the meetings. I think it was the one with Lincoln was sitting next to me and gave someone a finger, do you remember that? I remember notable events.
I remember Lincoln and I remember Poland.
That meeting.
Yes. Yes, I would.
I want to talk to you about, you're talking about doing something on the nineteenth, we have a very important telling
That was an all of them.
Yes, we do. You were. It's the question, it's the school organization.
I think, I think I was on the board, but because
People should go.
I wasn't at the beginning of that project.
But you didn't speak up, saying you felt it was commercial because of all the buildings.
I don't
I just
I don't recall.
Okay. If you're, you're welcome to participate, but
I can hand over to Daniel, and that would be, that would be absolutely fine with me.
Fine.
But I don't know if Daniel's agreed to me.
Right.
So if Daniel does not agree, then I I will be happy.
So it's
I just want to make sure you didn't speak for or against that application.
So
Is this one of those situations where whoever is gonna participate has to Yes. Look at the whole record. I need to look at the whole record, come and review all the minutes, listen to the
Huge ask, and I want to clarify that the ask came from council.
Not just our council, the other councils.
Their council too.
Because of three, because three people, they have to all be in the affirmative. Or negative, I guess, but they all have to vote the same, they can't do two to one, that's not, that's not a quorum of the board.
Right, okay.
That's why they're asking if others would be willing to, it's it's gonna, it's a lot to look at and listen.
How many boxes are we talking?
No, no, it's not boxes, it's, it's just, there was a lot of meetings.
Yeah.
And they were long.
I be, I was there for a lot of them.
But there was a lot of meetings.
Yeah.
Um
It's a lot of minutes to
Yeah, minutes and not so much, so much submissions, really.
Okay.
It was just the the lengthy public hearings that
Do they have to listen to the tapes or or
They have to listen to the, yeah, they gotta watch the YouTube stuff, it's on the town website. Sign an affidavit, so Yeah, you gotta sign it, and the end, you're gonna sign an affidavit saying you familiarize yourself with that full record.
No, I, I'm okay doing that, I read War and Peace and liked it. This is nothing.
I have a question from myself. This is uh concerning the whole quarry, quarry question, correct?
No.
No.
This is the
Okay.
Work, work, and in northeast harbor.
Okay.
The heelway project.
Got it.
Neighborhood road?
Yeah. Neighborhood and Shore.
Yeah. And D three sixty.
So we need to just know so that you guys can start. Yes, yes.
Gotta tell Andy something, so
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to do it.
I'm willing to do it.
I'm willing to do it.
Good. You guys should have group listening sessions with
Alright.
Next.
Yeah, they're fantastic, thank you, I know that's
But me as an alternate, how like, logistically, how does that, someone has to, well, games
Yeah, I'm a
Games recuse, so we'll vote.
And Meredith will be doing, so we have three.
Yeah, Meredith will be voting, one, two, three, four, five, six, we only need five of us.
Yeah, well, you need five regular members.
I would say you should have six people review every
Yeah, but in case somebody
Yes, for sure, I agree with that, it's like alternate jerseys or something.
I can go ahead and, you know, review everything, and if I need, if something comes up that I said something and you know, then I can recruit myself at that moment, but it sounds like we'll have plenty of people.
The guy gave a finger to Joe.
Yeah.
Oh, that was
Yeah, yeah, someone stole his phone and said they threw him in the ocean.
Wait, we had the cops at uh two meetings with copper.
His phone into someone's face, and they kept, they were like, can you please stop and so
Gotcha.
He was right next to me.
He was out of control.
And he may have set the corner.
Or again.
Yeah, but he didn't stay in the corner.
He was he would
Just playing disruptor.
Well, just like
No, he wasn't, he wasn't making any decision, I mean, he just was, somebody asked, I mean, he has phone right in someone's face, well, not right in their face, but you know, they were, it was a packed room, he was sitting next to me over here. He was going like that, and the people didn't like it and asked him to stop. And then it just blew up, police came up. Well, we're
Yeah, all right, so we got Anne, Daniel, and Alan committed to that, and I'll relay that to Andy, so thank you, and thank you Meredith too for
Might be the best not bad I ever wrote.
Coming back to join us, so right, so I think
What was the date on that?
Well, Gail just pointed out that there was a town meeting on the nineteenth.
Yes, there is, there's an important town meeting, and it's where the school system is going to be presenting to the citizens of Mount Desert, the subject of reorganization of the school system, and that's on the nineteenth.
Ooh.
And and you all want to put that in your calendar and hopefully attend at the neighborhood house.
November nineteenth?
November nineteenth.
What time?
I'm gonna look that up, I don't remember.
Uh
Oh, maybe I have
The reman's gonna be the
Remind me too, Gail.
Um November Yeah. It'll be three A M. It'll be so, you want a a night like a
So we could
Off night, so that she can celebrate a birthday, and we do have applications coming on the twelve.
So that's the other thing, so that's what's gonna mention is that's also a regular planning board hearing night, and we have applications coming, and there is no way we are gonna be able to get through the reman and applications in one night, so I'd, I'd put out there that um, you know, we think about just having a special hearing and I don't know, it's, I I think it's always hard when we have a regular hearing, and then we have a special hearing immediately after or before it, so I would cast a vote for a special hearing the following week sometime.
Always okay with me.
We do have a lose, lose, a regular scheduled lose our meeting on the eighteenth, which is the Tuesday, and then we have the reorganization on the nineteenth. Other than that, I'm not involved, so I don't, I have a high school meeting on the seventeenth, I don't, doesn't matter.
I I would I would be inclined to cast a vote for the eighteenth.
You first gotta see if the attorneys are
Yeah.
Able to attend to, so we got the okay, I think, from all of them for either the twelfth or the nineteenth. Well, we have to figure out what to do with the land use advisory committee meeting, just
I mean
When's the comp plan at the heart, at the neighborhood house?
Reorganization plans on nineteenth.
As Gail, do you think either the loser committee could be earlier and like later afternoon, like I don't know how many of those members work?
Um they do, but I'm Katrina may not be
And Anne or Meredith, or Anne and Meredith, does the eighteenth or dare I say the twentieth work?
I'd have to check my schedule, but Wednesdays are always open for for planning board things for me. I'd have to get down into the nitty-gritty of the calendar, which I don't have with me at the moment, for Tuesday or Thursday.
Okay.
Either one works for me.
Right.
I'm hoping.
Daniel?
Yeah, be open. Either one.
Twenty is my anniversary, but I have that every month.
Can just
Not as soon.
Do you want to ask council about the eighteenth or twentieth?
Can check.
Following week, cause it's Thanksgiving, it's
Yeah. Yep. God, we only have the one meeting.
Why does it have to be in November?
I I suggested the one in December, and they were just dead against delaying it anymore than it already is.
I can understand.
Yeah, well, they just got six people committed to processing this for them.
I just checked, I'm okay for both of the dates, eighteenth or twentieth.
And you need
For six, for six o'clock. If that's what time it would be.
I would think council would like to give the members stepping up to the plate as much time as they need to familiarize themselves. But why don't we start by asking about the eighteenth?
I go first, see also if this room's available.
Okay.
Those dates, we'll check. Right, I mean, it's scheduled for the loser meeting on the eighteen, so we'll have to get done We'll have to get done by six is all.
And Meredith, are you around the first? If it gets pushed to December, are you here first week of December?
Yeah. I should be.
Yes.
Can you hear me okay? Yes.
Yes, it's good.
Okay.
Yep.
I guess they're three thousand dollars worth, I'll tell you.
Well, your compensation is based on attendance.
Oh, regular meetings? Are you special?
All meetings.
Yeah, all meetings. Shit.
I would propose for this, but enough. Or whenever we do it, that maybe we could even send a failure on the day. This is gonna be.
Would that be any issue, Meredith or Ann, if we started earlier, like at five?
Yeah, I would probably not be able to get there till five thirty.
Okay.
On a Tuesday or Thursday.
We'll, we'll keep it at six.
We'll see. Yeah.
Yeah, the Thursday one, I could not make it until six.
Okay, alright. It's the normal.
Hey, Kim's checking the calendar to see if the room's available.
Certainly I have the dates about meeting.
They are available?
They are.
Okay.
Apparently they're available.
Alright, so the ball's in your court then to ask Andy and Brady and. Whoever else was involved. All Greg. Brady, was Dan, was Dan here?
Dan would be here and Kathleen, Kathleen.
Okay, make Lincoln sit in the corner.
No, no.
No, that's, no, that's the press who makes sit in the corner if they. But come on.
We're being recorded.
Alright, let's circle back to where we were on the.
If you think of it, if you decide on the eighteenth, will you just shoot me a note so I can see about rearranging the loser meeting?
Well, we can have it. We just, we would have it. Have to be done in an hour.
Yeah, or have, or try to, I could try to get it going at four if that's a possibility. Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna transition out as we transition to the next subject and I will see you all. At the next meeting. Thanks.
And.
Thank you.
Bye.
See ya.
See ya.
Can we change the view one more time so we can see us too?
That's the gallery, that's.
Is that?
The gallery. That's, that's it. Yeah, when speaker, looking you, you know, one speaks.
And then we lose, no.
Does it seem like it's working? I think it.
They do.
Multi speaker.
We're saying it.
Multi speaker.
It isn't working.
No.
Oh, it is not.
What kind of?
I heard something to this effect. Cause usually the gallery shows all, you're right, and I think it's not.
Yeah, but we definitely had meetings where it shows like.
Yes. Particularly if you're speaking at meetings.
I shaved for nothing.
Then you gotta know if you're sitting up straight or.
Let's see. So if we're going back to the stuff we were doing last night. We did talk about. Um, whether or not we wanted to have. Um, projects that the CEO was gonna be approving, whether she would review them like a subdivision.
So I guess some context for that, L E, one of the other versions of L E eighteen twenty nine is that of divisions of. At three or four units that are within the same structure are now have to be reviewed as an administrative review and should not get full subdivision review. Uh, through a planning board. Now, I think in theory, I'm still trying to figure out if that means. That a planning board could still review it, but it's just an administrative review, so it's just like a one meeting, like review. It's not through full subdivision review, or if it means the code office has to be the one to review it. And there's no public meeting board at all. Um. But so essentially that's what, you know, referring to is that. If the code office were to be the body to review these three or four units subdivisions that are within the same structure. Um, what would the process be for the code office when reviewing that? Does the town want them to review it? Like a subdivision, like a planning board would anyway, so it's just the code office doing it. Or because it is small structure subdivision, there could be a new process created with different standards that make it quicker and less. On our son, the code office.
And I think Kim was suggesting she wanted to sort of do it with a subdivision.
It suggested that doing, she would just do her.
She would do it.
The subdivision review and. The planning board typically would.
And notify.
And then they're getting a budget of that provision, but the.
Yeah, currently I don't notify and I have to notify people on an issue of the lingering. And I'm sure if somebody filed for a triplex or a quadplex and right next to them and got no notice taken, and all of a sudden. We're dwelling units are there and I think somebody might have a little bit of heartburn and not. You know, was saying something about it, so I think we're gonna have to add that to the ordinance. Maybe so. I don't, maybe all applications are just these ones and.
All applications.
I'll be like.
Of good.
Within that notification to all permit.
Um, I think if you look at Elsworth Minor Site Plan Review Process, that's what I was gonna model this off of anyway. It has like a ten day butter notice period built in and it's for projects that are like in between just needing like a bill permit. And needing to go to planning board first major site review. And it's, so there's like different triggering mechanisms for when you need to go to minor site review instead of just needing a bill permit. You can look at that and see if that's, like, if you want extra.
So they only do it for certain.
Yeah.
So applications, they don't do them for everyone.
Not everything, yes.
Okay, that would be okay. Cause I'm not asking to give myself extra.
I mean.
Or else. Well, it is, but I'm not. Every application that I.
Right, yeah. Like, I mean, if someone has to do like, so like a single family home, like.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes with a bank, like they're building a new bank structure somewhere or something like that, you might put through minor site review instead. Do the ten day, ten day butter notice period and that sort of thing. Sort of determine what triggers.
What, what type of development or.
Yes, yeah, okay. One of the things I think we talked about is the density, how the density requirements and upcoming laws.
Yeah.
We're gonna make. If you combine it with what we're currently thinking about. Or um. Bonuses and that sort of thing, it ends up being extraordinarily dense actually. And so the question I think was, I didn't quite get all the way through that in my head. But wasn't that another one of the issues that we had?
Yeah, so as another one, so essentially it's of. You've all seen the subdivision ordinance pretty much in pool, uh, for the most part. The part that I'm still working through the attorney with in particular is the specialized subdivisions. Um, cluster is probably fine, like right now it's just like a. Twenty-five percent bonus intensity with the trade off of having common area and then you're allowed to like condense your development down. Um, that one's pretty straightforward. Um, affordable housing one, again, pretty straightforward. That's all, right now, that's all just state required, things that came through L E thousand three. And I have at what in L E in twenty-nine, uh, been required. Um, so the one that really I'm kind of stuck with. Is the workforce or attainable housing bonus uh, structure where. You know, there's, there are a series of bonuses for different things that almost tried to combine in like. Cluster, if you like did a workforce and a common area, but just built, or if you did it in a certain zone where you're wanting. incentivized dense housing, like you got another layer bonuses. And I was just thinking about, I had originally like built that. To, because lots weren't allowed to be five thousand square feet at the time. I built that so that essentially a lot could get down to five thousand square feet. And then you'd get, that's like the, the bonuses that you'd give would build up to that, but now the state is requiring that you allow that. And so the bonuses would then. Like make you allowed to put up.
Yeah, I'm talking.
Lot of like uncharacteristic number of units within like a five thousand square foot lot. Again, it's probably not physically possible. Uh, but it would technically be a lot, so somebody would be able to try and do it. So like if you're talking about thirty or forty units on a five thousand square foot lot.
The only way you could do that is going out.
Or, and right, so like.
And you can only go to four down.
You can't like physically do it probably, but again, like still somebody would be allowed to it. And so it's also just a complicated way to get there.
Tiny conus.
So like the process like I spoke about last night was. Uh, stuff like go back and forth, no, this a bit, but you know, you have like just a base requirement of. Um. Every housing development over a certain number of units needs to provide a certain percentage of their workforce housing. And so, uh, you typically like it's somewhere between ten and twenty unit developments need to provide a certain percentage of their workforce housing. Uh, and then if you do that, great, cause it's required. But if you're built, the only bonus then would be if you're building a development that. I would say if it's fifty-one percent of the units or more, but you could go to a hundred percent of the units of workforce housing, then you get like one nice extra bonus on top of that. And that's for something that is like entirely or majority workforce housing. That's, so that's really the only bonus you get and it's not super complicated, it's just very straightforward. Uh.
Simplicity.
Yes, and so the other piece of it though, that all I have been talking about is doing a um. Fee in lieu of units. So like if you are required to do that, uh. Workforce housing units on any type of housing project, the developer would then have the option to, instead of building units, pay a fee. For every unit they're not building, so it's similar to a lot of towns and may have started to. Uh, but then that money would go into like a Mount Desert Housing Trust Fund or something and then sound could invest that money in workforce housing. Developments outside of what's being built by this developer, like they would just collect the fees and then invest or support other types of workforce housing projects. Uh. And so that would be like the two sides to it, I guess.
The thing is about town like us, I, I don't imagine that we're gonna have. That many nineteen, twenty. You know, Ellsworth maybe, but not. I mean, how do we see that realistically happening here very often that?
Well, you could make the threshold, whatever, I mean, it could be as little as four or five, you know, housing units, you're still required to make one of them workforce. As impressed the thresholds up again to the town, you can change that part. Uh, but typically it's usually a ten to twenty sub units is what town looks at.
Seems to me that we'd want somebody to do an, an analysis of that, like what's, what's the town likely to gain in, in affordable housing? From that technique versus allowing greater density.
I'm saying you still have the greater density piece for projects that are, you can set the threshold to whatever you want, about fifty-one percent or more of the units are. Workforce housing, they get the straight up density bonus, it doesn't matter where they are in the town or anything like that, which I had built in on originally when I was thinking about it. Uh, cause I was really trying to give bonuses to people who were building in like the village center or VR one or VR two. Again, those are all zones that are now growth area with water and sewer for the most part. And so. Those that zones already get this five thousand square foot with four units that like allow by rights. Uh, bonus, and so the town, so essentially the state just preempted the bonus I had designed. And so now unless you want to allow like.
Their post.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Amherst just flip.
I apologize, it's just blink to the account. I'm ready to fish.
Uh. Yeah, so like, yeah, if we think like about it, I had a bonus, I think the greatest number of bonuses you could get. Was a hundred percent uh, bonus for workforce housing. And so all of a sudden you're allowing. You know, again, the way the state structured, what exactly, when does the bonus kick in? For development, so if they're allowed to have four units and five thousand square feet, and then they're allowed to have. Another five thousand square feet for every unit after that, with the bonus kick in. Of the base density of the one thousand two hundred fifty square feet per unit. And then for the first four, so if you're allowed four with that density, you all of a sudden get a. Then if it was like a ten unit building, that's five more. Uh, units, that's twenty-five thousand square feet extra, so it's a thirty thousand square foot lot. Sorry, don't pay attention to me, really, I'm trying to do. And so then for the final five units. Uh, instead of, yeah, instead of five units, you essentially get ten units, so you're now talking instead of a five unit structure. Now, instead of a ten unit structure, you're talking about an eighteen unit structure.
On what size? Total size?
On thirty thousand square feet.
So that's like three quarters of an acre or something?
Yeah, pretty much.
A lot, still.
Right, and you have to fit that in. If it's not affordable and just workforce, so it's only get three.
Does it give me four story approximately?
Like, uh, if you have.
It's fifty-four.
Oh, no, it's not affordable, it's just workforce. The affordable is the only one that gets the.
Oh, okay, sorry, the extra height.
So it has to be done at three stories, which could be six units or four, which I mean, it's not possible. Three on each side.
It's all such, some theoretical thought.
But yeah, so I don't like, that's, again, that's all. On a thirty thousand square foot lot, which again is big enough probably to handle that if you do. But this is gonna fit like really in the village center, is it gonna fit in VR one? Uh, is there space to do that type of project there?
I think when we're talking to the townspeople about this and the comprehensive plan or whatever process. I suspect there are gonna be people who wanna know, what's the most that we have to do under this law? And then talk about what our policy objectives are and how our policy objectives may dictate that it's best to do, to offer more than that. So. I'm gonna bet that somebody, that that's gonna be a kind of analysis in some way.
Terms of workforce housing. You have to do, that's all a choice by the town.
Uh huh.
In terms of affordable housing, you have to do the extra story, fourteen foot minimum bonus and then. Which I would suggest just doing fourteen feet, don't do more than that. Uh, cause I think you already mentioned you had to put a provision to allow a higher structure. If. Yeah, that's how surely. And then you already allow the two and a half times density bonus for affordable housing, so that's already done. And then. Uh. Think that was it's affordable housing.
Mind spinning.
Which is state required, and the rest is just for the whole set. But like if it's in, or the whole area, it's an adverse area. And has water and sewer. Yeah, you have to allow the five thousand square foot and the four units by right and then five thousand square feet for any unit after that. So that's not adjustable. And you could do less or more density that if you really wanted to, but. Right now the town doesn't have anything that's act like allows that density.
So an acre you're gonna have to allow twelve, in that zone, you have to allow, a minimum, you're gonna have to allow twelve.
If there's a lot, uh, if there's a lot.
So you get four plus.
If, so if there's a lot in this birth area with water and sewer, it's an acre. Uh. And if they want to divide that or just keep it an acre?
I was just trying to get my head around what.
So by right, you have to allow four units on that lot, that's a big enough to support that, so that's fine. And then. And for every unit after that, there'd be five thousand square feet, so what, thirty-eight hundred square feet divided by five, or by five thousand is. Thirty-two thousand square feet, sorry, divided by five thousand, it's like seven. Extra units that could fit there with the four, so it's eleven units on acre.
Where, where are we going with all this?
We just gotta, we have to try to figure out what we have to do in order to apply with the new.
Well, where we started was knowing all the density bonuses that you're getting through that law. What kind of bonuses do you want to provide for workforce housing projects?
In addition to that.
Right, do you want to make it just, change it to being really bonuses and making work work thousand just a straight requirement? For all housing projects of a certain size. And then like if it is a hundred percent or fifty-one percent, whatever you guys want. Or think would work best, do they get like maybe an additional bonus to that, to what the law is currently requiring? Uh, and you could maybe even build it in the same way that L E eighteen twenty-nine is by like what kind of infrastructures in place. Or you just do it across the board, you get like a fifty percent bonus if you're a hundred percent workforce housing, no matter where you are. Uh.
Why are we having bonuses? Why wouldn't we just?
Well, we do now.
We do, yeah.
We do now, that was all.
There's no blanket requirement right now.
Right, so, so the question, this is changing what we're required to do, and then the question is how does it mesh with what we already have? And do we want to change what we already have in some way? Because. Because we're gonna have to do this.
Is there a way that you can provide like a schematic? Of what the town, what the town allows now under the ordinance? And then what this LD eighteen twenty nine is trying to accomplish.
That's what I gave you guys last night.
Yeah, but I meant like uh just show like Gail just, yeah, picture like show an acre law. Show this is what the ordinance is today, and this is what this state is trying to propose.
The permutations based on the variables that you told us about, like one acre, then you get four, but if you have. Uh every acre after that, you need five thousand square feet, number two, and then. That's the maximum you can have on an acre, and then these are the multipliers that can be applied to the acreage to. To take it up to like the next level, like workforce housing, low income or affordable housing.
Man, I can.
Yeah, or you or if you, or I mean, I don't know if another way to do it is you got five thousand square feet. You got four. And then you need five thousand for everyone beyond that, so how does that, depending on the lot size. Because it's not gonna be just even acre, so, but depending on the lot size, how many? Dwellings would be allowed on that.
And how high do you want me to go with that?
If we need to get ridiculous about it, but.
Stop at like five acres.
Uh yeah, most, I would say.
Putting a five acres on you, but it's just to kind of get a perspective, a visual for me versus. You're rambling a bunch of numbers and.
Yes, yes, it's hard.
And I'm just totally, I can't keep up with it.
One acre.
It's highly coherent, but we're not getting it.
It's not fair, the state made a very.
It's not clear, it's never clear, they're never clear.
Art to two lines, though, you get five thousand at the low end, and then the next sort of standard. Lot that the town, the state looks at is the twenty thousand square foot per septic, like those be the two. Pinch points to work between, because northeast harbor certainly is a lot of, observed a lot of septic.
Yeah, uh I mean, I could literally draw it now if you wanted, again, just math. But again, like, yeah, so you have an acre lot and you're in the growth area and you have public water and sewer. That's the eleven units, because you get the four by right. And so if you have forty thousand square feet, right, please, an acre. You subtract the five thousand, that you get.
Thirty, thirty seven, something.
It's, yeah, so it's gonna be like thirty seven or thirty eight thousand, but then if you round down.
So this.
My math is.
Seven.
To make by by.
You have the extra seven.
You get the seven units, that's four plus seven. So an acre can, in a growth area with water and sewer, could at minimum. For like, again, unless the town goes less strict, but would have to allow eleven units on.
Seven point seven.
What?
Does that mean eight?
No, no, no.
You don't round it up.
You don't round that up. Yeah, the space can't do that.
Well, that'd give you eleven, right?
Yeah.
On an acre.
On an acre.
And then that's before you consider any bonuses for different types of houses. These are. Meaning actions.
Again, and I don't know how to do this math yet, because the question that hasn't been answered, but again, if so, you are required to do the affordable housing bonus now. Does that mean you just take the eleven and multiply that by the two point five? To get your twenty three units now that you're allowed all of a sudden? Or is it staggered where it's like, well? At the first five thousand square feet, you were allowed four units, because they were twelve, one thousand two hundred fifty square feet per unit, so you might multiply that by two point five. Maybe it's the same number, I have no idea, but. And so now on your five thousand square feet, you're allowed eight units. Then you're allowed technically eleven or seven units to four after that, multiply that by two point five, which is fifteen, so twenty three, never mind. That horrible housing, you know, it's gonna be twenty three units on an acre.
Right. So that's some of the fun stuff that we sort of have to work through here, and I think we've got it and at the Luso and. Which is why getting it done in an hour is not as easy as it seems, and. The cop plan, I mean, it's this stuff has to be rolled over to the cop plan discussion, the public cop plan discussions too.
Yeah, I mean, we got till twenty twenty seven.
Right.
To get this into our ordinance and subdivision ordinance. But the cop plan is not gonna be complete, so there's no sense in rushing it, so, right, so that's complete.
I don't have it on my calendar, but I thought that there was a cop plan. Public meeting scheduled.
It's on the November thirteenth.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Neighborhood house.
Okay.
And it's something, something like four thirty to seven. Five to seven or something. I don't know.
Actually, I don't. Really, my problem. Uh I have, uh it's probably on here, four to seven thirty on our calendar, but that's because. We have to show up and set up and stuff like that, so probably five to seven thirty, something like that. But yeah, I mean, you don't have to worry about LE eighteen twenty nine really until July, but I was thinking of just the workforce housing bonuses. In relation to the eighteen twenty nine would be coming up. Like how? Do you really, and like? Do you really want to give like an hundred percent bonus to a project like that, or just currently like I could just take out? But I would take out some of the bonus structure I had built in anyway, because it doesn't make sense anymore. But uh. Would a hundred percent bonus still be like? The cap you'd want to have that allowed, where again, like. Affordable housing gets essentially two hundred fifty percent bonus at twenty three units, so then on a, on an acre, with an a hundred percent bonus. Doesn't make any sense, sorry, one second. It's two point hundred. Maybe it's more than twenty three, because a hundred percent bonus on units would be twenty two units, which would be. Eleven plus eleven, is an a hundred percent bonus. So for a workforce housing, it would be twenty two units, so for two hundred fifty or two hundred fifty percent units. I mean, okay, so I'm not good at math, but uh that could be. Forty one units on an affordable housing project or an acre.
Not a hundred fifty percent?
I think, because again, like, well, am I right, like, an a hundred percent bonus on an eleven units allowed lot? Would be twenty two units, right?
Eleven, right.
Right.
So it's twenty two plus forty four plus.
Three half of eleven would be thirty. Seven, thirty eight, okay, so something like that for.
Point five, right?
Yeah. So you're talking up for thirty, but okay.
So the reason that we're trying to grapple with this now, even though this doesn't, this law doesn't take effect until then, is that we haven't done all this work on the subdivision ordinance and hoping that we would maybe get it to town meeting this year. But we don't want to pass some things. Or submit something to the town that is gonna get thrown completely sideways by.
The cop plan.
The cop, well, or by uh LD.
Yeah, that's more, and the cop plan would be fine with whatever. We put.
But this is still up in the, yeah, the.
Not, so that was my question, like, are you guys aiming, uh what are you aiming at?
Well, I thought we were hoping to get through all the finally, finally, finally get through the subdivision rewrite to be able to take a town meeting, but this LD. Eighteen twenty nine kind of makes. We want to make sure that the calculations that we're thinking about making.
Right, like you don't, I don't wanna, we don't wanna put so forward bonuses that would then like really either. You know, mess with the town in a way that like people would just obviously hate the idea and they wouldn't vote for it. Or again, like. I don't, yeah, I don't think it would really be an issue where you're gonna get like a dozens of, you know, workforce housing projects all of a sudden, but. You know, forty, thirty something units, or there's. Would use a lot of water and sewer, and then the town might not be prepared to take that.
I mean, we yanked the subdivision amendments at the, well, the whole rewrite at the, at H hour last time.
Right.
If this thing is, if there's like a particular focus. Of the new rewrite, that this LD, we can't, we're not so hidden, eighteen twenty nine. Is making waves with, is there, does it make sense to say, hey, look, let's? Let's get these subdivision amendments or rewrite minus this before the town.
Uh yeah, I mean, I think that's definitely the safest way to go, because, I mean, so even if. Say like the the idea of a uh. Would be called inclusionary zoning, I guess, like whether it's just a straight bonus. For workforce housing, or if it's like the requirement for and all these housing projects, and then like the payment blue or the fee in lieu of. Uh building the structures. And I'm not super familiar with the guys towns process, uh but I imagine it would require like a workshop of some sort with the public to go through those ideas. Uh those are bigger than just kind of rewriting a subdivision ordinance, so pretty big policy changes. So I mean, like you could. But again, and you don't know if you'd want to pass this subdivision ordinance without a very good workforce bonus.
Right.
If you're aware that there are like potentially projects that would want to use that bonus that could come through.
Certainly been a policy of the town, because, because affordability, affordability, affordability is like. Was then, it probably will be now.
Yeah, and I mean, so we have at least solved one of the problems, which is separating, so cluster workforce, they're all their own. Uh types of subdivisions, so that problem is cleared up. You know, I guess for now you could just take. The increases up to fifty percent. Bonus, which is. Already allow, well, the town has actually, so the hundred percent number is what I got, this is where I got. Stopped it there, because what the town already allows in certain circumstances.
Could there be like.
Or seventy five percent.
Incremental ratcheting it up of. Density and bonuses instead of just.
That complicates.
Yeah, it complicates it, but I think that, I mean, the real problem is interfacing it with the state requirements.
I think it's more, yeah, I don't know, like. If you think of downtown here. Just like off the top of your head, like what is like the largest building you would like think would fit in? With this area, or would work well with traffic and like. That type of circulation uh in this area. And kind of work backwards from there, where it's like. Can you even imagine like, hey, an apartment complex with thirty eight people living in it, being a downtown or a southeast harbor? Or in Seal Harbor Village area, like. What's like the most number of units that, like realistically, you think would be, like twenty, like?
I don't see how you can get thirty seven units. On an acre and have. Thirty seven plus cars. Parked on that.
Well, that's another question.
Awesome, yeah, it's not, it's not, it's a different state law like up.
Yeah, I was, we were gonna mention, I was gonna mention that too, because we talked about that, parking is a real interesting thing. And one of the rethings that we talked about last night ultimately was. We didn't reach any conclusions about it, but we've got parking permits here, parking permits there, and the state is gonna impose some. Requirements that you not require too much parking, and should we all pull all the parking requirement pieces out of the Luso and have it be in one place? And it's gotta conform to. It's gotta conform to, it'll have to conform to another section of eighteen twenty nine, so.
As a current bill altogether.
Oh, I'm sorry, four two seven. So we may not require more than one on-street parking space of per dwelling unit for residential development. Municipally may require parking maximums and parking management strategies that do not require more than one space per dwelling. Off-site parking agreements, the municipality must allow developers to use off-site parking agreements with existing parking facilities within a quarter mile of the development.
Let's say the first part is only in the growth area. Do you have to allow in the growth area, I didn't type that up, but it's the growth area.
Oh, the growth area, yes, yes, yes.
It's one space per uh dwelling unit, and so in theory, someone could have parking four mile away on someone else's lot. And then people have to walk to their apartment, I mean, it's fine.
That's stupid.
Well, it's fine, yeah.
There's something around here, maybe, or maybe.
I wouldn't run it just for that reason.
I have, yeah, I have.
But then you've got, most people have, most people have two cars. So then that that creates.
That's true.
Five.
I think, but I.
Yeah, no, you're not most.
Families would have two cars, I don't think most people.
Yeah, sorry, yes, you're right, yes. I meant that, most households. Most hustles with two working people.
Here anyway, not behind a.
Yeah.
House, yeah.
So what's next in the short term?
Good question.
Well, I would still like to know, so I mean, let's just actually keep going on the workforce stuff for a minute, because if we look at it, it's already in the ordinance. Where you have at least fifty percent.
As is of the draft we're working on.
Though it's as it, so like if we took all other subdivision changes, and we're like, we're not gonna worry about workforce yet, because eighteen twenty nine, I was gonna take what the town already has. Plug it in there. And then just roll with it, and then maybe when you update the eighteen twenty nine. You also update the workforce housing provision within the subdivision ordinance. Town currently just allows, if you're up to fifty per, or at least fifty percent. Of the units are workforce housing, it's a fifty percent density bonus. And if it's up to a hundred, if it's a hundred percent workforce housing, you get the seventy five percent density bonus.
Right.
I could just take that and plug that into the ordinance now, so then between. This town meeting. And then the next town meeting, there is still like a workforce housing bonus. Somewhere in the ordinance, and again, the problem of it being confused with clusters now solved, they're still there in separate things.
Right.
Subdivision ordinance. And then we come back to the. Maybe more creative and work intensive potential workforce bonus, or some type of like funds that can be created through workforce housing. And do that at the same time as LD eighteen twenty nine and twenty seven.
Yeah, once we're integrating those in. Um and of course, we've never know what the next legislative session will. Yeah.
They're gonna change the definition of subdivision, so. I can tell you they're gonna try and do that. So that's three splits in, uh you have to wait five, uh it's not a three-year period waiting, it'd be five splits in five-year waiting period. So you would have, you'll split more. Rapidly. And not got to go to planning board. They already partially did that with eighteen twenty nine, but only for twelve units.
Just lots are not there.
For now, but in the next session, they might actually go into lots. I know they'll pass, but I've heard they're gonna try and do.
So five, within a five-year period?
They do what they did for structure, or for dwelling units this time with eighteen twenty nine, where they made it five and five years, just to improve subdivision.
Busy time. Um you probably are on to something when it comes to plugging in the existing. Uh percentages. Given. And in in the proposal that we've been working on. With the idea that we're gonna have to reconfigure what that means when we actually figure out what.
But yours, it definitely is worth taking the time to have discussions about that, because. Is a pretty big change, I mean, it's not just about getting your guys approval, it would be something I think the select board could have a workshop on. Or it goes to town meeting too, and uh. I don't think we have the time between now and when stuff's due for this cup coming town meeting to have those discussions. So just get the rest of the subdivision ordinance updated and changed, plug this in, and then. I mean, we can continue to work on it, but just know it's, we have a little bit of extra runway to. Finish the work.
Right, because it's gonna be altered by. Eighteen twenty nine.
Well, how it's necessarily altered by, but just there's. There are consequences.
It's always clear as much as it is.
So I think that's the best course of action for that.
Okay.
But the, I'll also read through the other future land use stuff that we talked about a little bit last night, we did talk about. So not just having minimum lot sizes change, uh because that's happened because of eighteen twenty nine. But then also looking at doing a unit per acre density structure throughout the zoning, so the town, so. With LD eighteen twenty nine, certain areas are gonna be required to do it anyway, with the one thousand two hundred fifty square feet per dwelling unit. Or the five thousand square feet per dwelling unit. Uh so it may make sense to just go through all the zones. And not for this town meeting, but for a future town meeting. And start applying. A unit per acre density, just so. If there's not just like these random areas down where that's applied, it's just a consistent standard throughout the town. But again, that's gonna be talked about more at the cop plan level for future land use.
Right.
You can re, uh you might want to reconsider existing zones. Because again, now with eighteen twenty nine, there are gonna be zones in these particular, that meet these particular criteria where like. Our one and our two were very different before, but now they're gonna. Be duplicates of each other, except when they're not. In a growth area, and then they don't have water and sewer. Then like what the towns individual provisions for them would still apply, otherwise with this, or like they'd be different, or now they're gonna be same. Across other parts of the town. So it may just be worth. Shifting and saying, okay, well now R one, like some places that are R two now. Might just make sense to be R one, and they have the same requirements, and then you create. For the zone, that's for the, like, if the R one and R two that are in the growth area would have that, and if there's like R one and R two that are outside of the growth area. That's all just R two now, or something like that, where you have to reorganize the zone. That's all just R two now, or something like that, where you have to reorganize the zones, so it's just. Because on a wider table, it's just gonna be a bunch of duplication, like, it's, you can condense it all, um, in some way. And then, uh, we talked about potential for maximum lot sizes, uh.
Right, that's something Katrina's talked about, could have been.
And Noel told me that, uh, this morning, that that was something he had looked at doing, um.
Right.
A while ago, but he couldn't find any good models for it, and I do agree, because I. I know the concept, but I actually don't know of anywhere that's actually adopted it, because I think there are a lot of bad things that could happen with maximum lot sizes.
Uh, the idea is that there are some areas in the town, and Sylvan City is one of them, and, uh, where there are very small lots right now. And the concern that has been expressed is that. There's, that's a particular type of neighborhood, and it will tend to have more ability to be affordable. And, but, it's, there's, there will be increasing pressure for someone to come in and buy lot A, and then. Buy lot B and combine them, and lot C and combine them, and then build something big on those lots, and then you've extinguished. You've radically changed the character of that neighborhood, and you've, you've, you've turned one, two, three housing lots into one big lot. And so there has been the argument made that that's. That may be something that we want, the town should consider, whether or not they want to try to, by zoning. Then the maximum, the min- the maximum lot size, whether they want to try to prevent or forestall that from happening. Um, there was other areas too, I think maybe Seal, some of the Seal Harbor areas.
Yeah, like those village center, like, the, all the village zones are places where that, I think that could be, like, possible, and wouldn't have, like. Negative consequences necessarily. Um, again, just looking to see if there are other tools potentially that achieve a similar goal without actually doing lot maximums, I mean. You can always look at, like, lot coverage percentages, which you already do, but maybe just changing those in certain parts of the town.
Mm-hmm.
So that would prevent someone from cover, like, if they did buy all these smaller lots, prevent them from, like, covering. Too much of that land area in a structure, I mean, I guess they could just buy it and not do anything with it, but.
Right.
That was one thing that came up too, and then, uh, we also talked about whether or not the current growth areas from the past comp plan. Two thousand nine still makes sense, and if there are potentially other, now the state is, like, using growth areas from complans. In their legislation, which they hadn't really done too much of before. Uh, even if there are areas where you might potentially think development could happen, traditionally, you would have included that in a growth area, but now you might not want to. Because there are gonna be actual consequences to doing that. Uh.
That we might not, but.
Yeah, you might wanna just come up with, like, a different term, like a zone of potential development or something like that, but don't use the term of our growth area when describing it. Uh, try and get around anything else the state might put out in future sessions that affect growth areas.
I mean, and, and I've always mentioned that we need to talk about the growth areas in some way, because it doesn't have water and sewer, it has sewer, and that's just the main street. And so, that's, by state definition, that's not a growth area, and, and how much can you grow without overflow and sewer?
No, it, it is a growth area, but it's not a growth area with water and sewer, so it doesn't have to meet the.
Okay, alright, no, it is, I agree, it is a growth area, but, but in terms of the state's requirements.
Right, it's not.
Super historical.
Yeah, the part, that whole mainstream is historical.
Uh, but, yeah, there was, like, a growth area from the last comp. Uh, then again, like, how do you pick the growth areas in an intelligent way, where you're also potentially not. Encouraging sprawl of some sort, um. You know, uh, right, like, that would, that's, you, you really have to just tighten up where your growth areas are, and when you do a comp plan now, because of community.
Well, with regard to that whole infrastructure thing, we've talked about the fact that one of the things that would be worth a comp plan. Uh, the people in the community talking about through the comp plan process is, what areas would you like to see developed? So that there could be more of ho- ho- opportunities for housing, and. And you don't have to call them anything yet, but the town could develop plans. Longer-term plans for how you would extend water here, or how you would extend water and sewer there. And are there areas of the town where you'd wanna look at having. An action plan for trying to make, move forward on that kind of stuff. And that's something that people need to figure out.
Yeah, and then, say, that's all, we'll get talked about through future land use, and then. And the last one I have are, kind of like, what's the most effective way to maximize the limited buildable lands, and deserve to increase housing? Uh. For, you know, and the, particularly in the current growth areas, there aren't, like, a ton of huge lots. Aren't, like, waiting to be split up and developed, but most of the land is broken up already.
Just a golf course.
Right, golf course was one of the ones that has technically water and sewer running to it, and then. Uh, but isn't the growth area, it's a conservation, but. Uh, but just how does maximize, again, like, the land that is left, and then how do you really incentivize housing? And whether it's, like, uh, internal development as opposed to actual new development.
Kind of mind-boggling.
But, yeah, I thought, yeah, we solved the one thing that we had to solve tonight. Just go, the rest is still just theory that you should be kind of thinking about.
Where that, where you're just trying to struggle with.
Gonna come to you at some point, not too far away.
I mean, you brought the select board, and it may be time for us to ask to be on their agenda, and just. Keep them in, but I also have to get in touch with the, the select board member who hasn't, isn't coming to our meetings, make sure he knows.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I guess there are history of the select board, planning board, doing, like, joint workshops together, and like.
Oh.
Okay, I would always do that, I'll sort that, just if there's something like.
We've had.
Big state law changes and stuff.
The council told us they wanted clear separation before.
Well.
When it comes to policy or particular act.
I think that, you know, there was, I mean, James Collier, when he was. God, what was the matter with Jane? It's something, no, Corey, you know, it's. It's about the quarry, and, you know, there were questions about the, in the pace of the quarry review, and. You know, where are we, and what are we doing, and, um, you know, and they, they wanted to question. You know, members of the board about that, and council was like.
Well, that I understand, because that's an active application, but this is more. The policy, you know, talking.
Policy workshop, it's all theoretical right now, uh.
Yeah.
So, like, what I would use them for, the joint workshops, was if I knew there were gonna be ordinance changes. I was gonna have to work with the planning board to update the ordinance and make a recommendation to council, rather than having the planning board do all the work. I'd go to council, having council shoot it down, because they're like, well, we don't like any of this. Be like, well, I'm just gonna have you all get in the room together, first time, the council can talk about, with what they like with the planning board. Planning board kind of has a better sense of direction.
I just wanna make sure that the planning board isn't getting over obligated to this, because. You know, I, I feel like this is just becoming more and more and more, and like, here we are tonight, struggling. To find time for a special hearing on a superior court revamp.
Yeah.
So, you know, we've got Luso committees, we've got select boards, we've got planning boards, yeah, we need a.
Multi-planner.
Whole time, what are you doing? Multi-platter. You know, I just wanna be measured about it, because, I mean, as much as I wanna have us involved in policy, I wanna make sure that it's balanced. Approach, you know, because we've kind of wanted the process to.
Well, it's like, I don't know how the structure is really built here, where. Um. You know, again, like, if you had a, the way, like, in Elsworth, any ordinance changes that affected. Their, like, their land use, um, stuff, the planning board had to review it, and then recommend it to the council, so that was a required step.
It is true, the planning board is still legally required to, like, to hold the public hearings.
Yeah.
And to vote on the proposals, the advisory committee is just an advisory committee.
It'd be nice if we had a piece of paper in front of us with this stuff. Written down, so we can follow you when you're saying this, and we could see it on a piece of paper. Like, what we need to do or aim at by when, or.
I don't have timelines for this stuff, because I don't know what the timeline for twenty-twenty-seven's town meeting is.
Yeah.
Uh, like, we, again, the one thing we really need to do for this upcoming town meeting, we just decide what to do with the workforce, how the density, we. Okay, that. Um, and so that way I can really finish the subdivision, uh, uh. Ordinance, again, just depending, the attorney's review, and he's looking at the parts that I asked him to now. Um, so that's almost done, really, I mean.
Yeah.
Uh, once Andy's done with it, I'll just bring it back to you guys one more time, just, because that should be like.
This board spent all the time on, on the subdivision ordinance, the, actually.
Yeah.
Um.
And so this is really just, I guess, teeing up, again, it doesn't have to happen anytime soon, but again, I think a workshop would be helpful, but it doesn't have to happen. In the near future at all, it could be like a spring of like.
People do need to wrap their heads around what is coming down the road that we're actually gonna have to administer one of the.
I did, I thought I.
I just like an administer one.
See, I do get the Luso and, and we're confused, I thought I gave the planning board the same sheet that Gail was reading, but maybe I only gave it to Luso, the ta- table of all the.
Yeah, no, that, we got that last night.
No, that, that's the table of uses, but there was the table you had that had, like, all the LDs you're.
Oh, yeah, 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 well, I, you may have, I mean, I just hung on to mine.
So, man, so I can't remember if I gave it to you all already or not.
Do you know if you guys got this?
I got, I got lots of stuff. What, what, what's it?
In any event, we can get, we get to office, yes, yes, you got it, okay.
That was, uh, seven twenty-three.
Yeah.
We went through that.
But you guys have it for sure digitally.
Um, I, Ken, I'm wondering if it would be useful for. I mean, I'm happy to do it as the Luso chair, and you. And, and I go in and talk with Alex about, and to sort of try to inform him about some of all the stuff that's going on, and. Where we might be headed, and what, and how to involve the select board, does that, does that make any sense?
Yeah, he's, he's got a lot on his plate right now.
I know.
As a new town manager.
I know, I know. He, he's been getting some high and inside fastballs.
He's been dealing with stuff that he's, with this mate.
Yeah. Well, I.
Wouldn't hurt, but I mean, I just sent him a email and CC and see what he thinks, and he'll come in and ask me about it.
Want to get a picture for the board of what we're aiming at to have before the town in May.
Subdivision ordinance.
Subdivision.
One we've been working on, and then there's other little things that the Luso Advisory Committee, other language of the Luso Advisory Committee is gonna workshop.
Now, so there will be, because of the subdivision ordinance changes, there are, it's gonna be small changes to Luso, pretty much just. From, from that specifically, just cross-reference to this, where there is currently, like. Cross-reference of the sections of the subdivision ordinance with the loser that will change, because the org, the.
Right.
Sections have changed, because the structure of the subdivision ordinance is different than what's currently, this thing, so that's, but, then I'll. Review that, that's just a factual, like, change to the ordinance, but then Andy, uh. Has, or I guess, based on the project you all reviewed.
The trailer park ordinance?
No, the access provision.
Yeah.
The access provision we spoke about last night.
Sixty-eleven.
Yes, 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 yes.
That project you all reviewed with the fire, uh, the house was a bar.
Yes, 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 a vending that will provisions to.
Uh, so, Kim.
Time to provide.
Talk about that next week, yeah, next week. And hopefully have, have language for the Luso committee review, uh, after we have that meeting, uh. And that'll go perfectly to the, uh, town meeting this, uh, year, and then also. Uh, again, I'll find out more, our meeting next week, because I thought it would be a simple change after last night, Kim, let me know, maybe it won't be.
Yeah.
Uh, but Andy would like to kind of limit the review, purview of the appeals board to somebody to floor land zoning stuff and. Variances, uh, apparently it's been tried before, right? But making that happen again, might be a.
Yeah, that's not something other from involved with.
Those would be the.
So it's, admittedly clear as mud, but that's.
So when do we see you again?
Uh, probably not, I, I guess, I don't know, uh. It's depending on how many applications you have at your regular meetings, and, we only have one meeting in November.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, depending on how many applications you have at that one, and it might be there, uh, but you have a lot of applications. I don't know that there's, you, you have to formally vote, recommend a ordinance change to get to the. Down, I see what.
Yeah, they, they're in that, usually February.
Oh, sorry, well, we got plenty of time then to, for the subdivision ordinance with that, then, so.
So what do we have for coming up for the next meeting?
I have a couple other, that, they, tomorrow's the application, uh, application deadline date.
Okay.
So.
Okay. But you think, um, maybe a couple?
And you also have to do the, you'll wait with you, I'll find, I'll give you guys a month off.
Yeah, that sounds, yeah, yes. Okay.
And, yeah, maybe December, but. But we have till February, we can play it by year.
Alright.
Got it.
Thank you for.
Thank you.
Do that.
It's a lot of thought there.
Yes, to get orders.
Another consciousness.
Okay, any other, other, can I? Done here?
No.
My second. Now that only leaves item five, Alan.
Oh, yeah, you make it.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Great, any further discussion? All those in favor?